Twenty-four, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristi Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Matthews had excused himself for this evening. He had a prior commitment that he couldn't get away from, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes of the council minutes from April 10th or additions? Hearing none, they do stand approved as presented. We're going to move right into proclamations and ceremonies, and I'll go down to the podium. If I may, call Aleah Andrews forward. Hi, Aleah. You've got a lot of stuff.
I know.
Okay. May is Mental Health Month. A good -- and let me read the proclamation. Whereas a good mental health is essential to overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, and families promotes a healthy community, and whereas one in five people in our communities experience a mental health condition each year, and whereas increased focus on the prevention of mental health conditions and substance use disorders among children and adolescents through screening and early intervention helps improve lives, and whereas the stigma against mental health conditions prevents many people from assessing care, and whereas the City of Wheat Ridge is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of its citizens by ending stigma and focusing on the integrated role of mental health in our lives. Therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor, and the City Council, City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Mental Health Month, and call upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to commit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. And now, let me introduce once again Aleah Andrews. Do you want to speak?
On behalf of the Board, staff, and clients of Jefferson Center for Mental Health, we thank you for issuing this proclamation and recognizing the importance of mental health and substance use resources in our community. We truly value the support of Wheat Ridge, the City of Wheat Ridge, and for your proclamation of May being Mental Health Month, Awareness Month. Thank you again. We could not do this important work without you and your support. Thank you.
Now, I would like to call Vanessa Demott, Ralston House, Vice President of Fund Raising. Hello, Vanessa. May I read a proclamation? Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment free from harm and fear, all children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators. It's up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end through awareness and action. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many. Whereas the month of April has been designated nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we encourage all Wheat Ridge citizens to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. And whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families, and now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, the City Council, the City of Wheat Ridge hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. Vanessa, did you want to say a few words?
Please. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and residents of the City of Wheat Ridge. On behalf of Ralston House Child Advocacy Center, Board of Directors, Staff, and Volunteers, we are honored to join the City of Wheat Ridge in proclaiming April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Last year, Ralston House served 1,128 children within our four-county reach of Jefferson, Gilpin, Adams, and Broomfield by providing free services to victims of child abuse, their families, law enforcement, human services, District Attorney's Office in both the 1st and 17th, services including forensic medical exams and interviews, victim advocates, a multidisciplinary case review team, community education and outreach with prevention training and programs, again, at no cost. We have planted 1,128 pinwheels at the Super Credit Union in Lakewood to represent each of those children who are brave enough to tell their story. We have planted another 1,128 pinwheels in Westminster at Front Range Community College and another partnership with North Glenn High School. Locally, we have partnered with almost 200 businesses, schools, medical offices, police and sheriff's departments, faith-based organizations, and local governments to bring the message of hope and healing to all those children who are no longer victims but now survivors. The bright blue pinwheel is that symbol of child abuse prevention across the nation. It's because of the generosity and compassion of communities like Wheat Ridge that every one of those kids has a voice. I wanted to close by saying crimes against children -- crimes against children cases can be unique and challenging, and our organization has been honored to receive proclamations from Westminster, Thornton, Arvada, Commerce City, Brighton, Lakewood, Broomfield, North Glenn, and now Wheat Ridge to help bring justice to the most vulnerable in your cities. I have recited the Pledge of Allegiance at every single one of these council meetings. The very last line in our Pledge of Allegiance reads "and justice for all." If everyone here tonight can just remember that justice for all means justice for that 1,128 kids and for all of those that are still out there. Thank you. We also have some kids here who would like to present your council and mayor with some pinwheels, just as a token of our appreciation of everything you guys do in the communities.
Thank you.
For our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Come on, buddy. Don't be shy.
You can't tell we're office funding our suicide papers that we do every August and September in Baltimore, Madison, and Delaware.
We have a busy night here tonight. We really do. We have been honored with the presence of Cub Scout Den Pat number 582. They're working on their citizenship in the community merit badge, and I'm going to invite the Cub leader, Bob Major, and the Cub Scouts and ask Bob to introduce the Cub Scouts. Bob, and I'd also like to know what that merit badge stands for, citizenship in the community. Where do I have Bob here? Oh, there he is.
Yeah, I'm Bob with PAC 582, and we wanted to thank the City Council and the Mayor for letting us come and work on our Build a Better World requirements for their next WIBL advancement. So, thank you.
And now, for our city, we have a pretty neat celebration. This evening, we are celebrating a major step in the issuance of voter-approved bonds. We're going to have a signing ceremony. With me this evening are the City Treasurer, Jerry DeTulio, and City Manager, Patrick Goff. And I'd like to thank the voters who supported the 2E ballot question approving a $33 million funding for Anderson Park renovation, Clerk Creek Crossing, I-70 hook ramps, Wadsworth Boulevard widening, Wheat Ridge Ward Road station economic development. Information on 2E, investing for the future, can be found on our city website, and we have a dynamic, dynamic, public information strategy to please keep -- to keep our citizens informed as we progress on each of these four projects. We officially close on the bonds on May 1st, at which point the city will receive $53 million that will go into the 2E fund, also known as Fund 31. Now, before we sign our lives away, I'd like to invite our treasurer to say a few words, if you want to.
Just three.
Maybe two or three, and the city manager had 30 or 40 minutes she wanted to.
First of all, I wanted to thank all of the voters of Wheat Ridge who approved ballot question 2E in November. Those four projects are going to really move the city forward in an effort to be transparent and to inform the voters as the money is collected and spent. On the city's website, we'll have our monthly report for normal finances of revenues and expenses. Also, we'll have a 2E or Fund 31 report that will be on and that will show the revenues and expenses of that half-cent sales tax that's been approved by the voters. Obviously, the first few months don't have too much in it. We will have the funds will be collected, the $33 million will be collected and put into a C-Safe account where that money will be earning a higher interest rate, and the only fund spent so far has been about $145,000 for the Anderson Park design. So, as we move forward through summer and fall, you'll see more information monthly on that report. So, that's our transparency goal for the year. Thank you.
City Council, you're going to be in the background. You could look excited. That would be great.
Sit up straight.
Ready? Everybody at once. Okay, wait hundreds. Ready? Ready? One, two, three.
Okay, it is time for a citizen's right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster. This would be matters or items that are not on the agenda. That's what we're bringing forward now. Okay, we have two speakers here. Jesse Hill, please give your name, spell your last name, and give your address.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to tell all the speakers tonight for public comment and later under agenda items, our little clock that runs the little lights is not working, and so I'll just be using my phone for a clock, but I will tell you when you have 30 seconds left.
Or throw something at me.
Yeah, okay.
Counsel, my name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. I live over 2995 Chase Street. And first off, congratulations on your city council retreat, all surviving. And the summary, it sounds like it was very productive that you had a while back ago. Extra thanks to the city clerk for typing up those detailed notes. They really help engage citizens, see what the city council's up to for the next year and beyond out there. And I invite all of the citizens here, go take a look at those. They're available online. Little pro tip, we got to update a hyperlink on it, but really was great stuff, and I really appreciate you all taking the seriousness and the time for that. So, one item caught my eye on it, and it's a passion of mine for a while. Last time I talked was 2013, and that is utility undergrounding. And this just might be Jesse Hill's civic cause of 2017 out there. There's some discussion of possibly a new tax out to the voters, but I wanted to remind counsel and the citizens, we already have a 1% kind of hidden tax that's on our utility bills. It's collected by Xcel Energy. It goes into a fund controlled by Xcel and then dispensed generally per the city manager and such out here. So, but back in 2013, I found this little email I had written up to some of you guys around council, and everything still stands. And the main thing is we don't have a formal plan of how we spend those 1% undergrounding funds. And, you know, for someone like myself, you know, it's like, are the -- how are they even divided? Are they equitable? Because every time I see them spent, it's a developer who has the ability to, say, finance undergrounding when they develop a project versus a homeowner who I can't do that for my street or finance the undergrounding for one, you know, block over here. And same thing, too, with our parks. And that's really where I'd like to see some of this focus, at least a plan out there. Because honestly, when you say if you go down 29th, it kind of looks like a third world, like back streets of Bangladesh or something like that with lines going all over, poles leaning, and I don't know. That's a commonly used one in District 1, and that gets me in it, too. Like, when's District 1 going to get something undergrounded, you know? I know you guys have had some great things. We'd love to see some over on our side. And just generally a policy or a plan for citizens or even business owners to formally go out there to get, you know, our cities improved, you know, and that visual aspect. So, you know, that's the main basis of it all, because it really, the residents pay this tax out there on their bill, at least this 1%, and if we have a plan moving forward for something else, please include us because it's out there. And for the fun of it, I just might even focus on 30th Street between Sheridan and Fenton. It's a perfect candidate out there, so I'll stop by, visit Patrick later in the week, and we'll discuss on how to -- how we can start. Maybe it's a good project, maybe it's a bad, but it's a step forward. So, thank you, City Council. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Jesse. Britta Fisher.
Good evening. My name's Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I'm the Executive Director of Local Works, an organization serving all of the city. And I happen to live in District 1. And Jesse, that was a most excellent suggestion of to wear to underground utilities. This evening, I wanted to thank you for your support of community-building events and to remind you that we have a large event coming up, and that is the Criterion and Brewfest on Ridge at 38. That's Sunday, June 11th, and we'll have activities going on from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, lots of things. And for those of you who aren't familiar, a criterium is a short-loop bicycle race. It's like NASCAR on wheels that are of the two-wheeled variety. And so, it's pretty fun, pretty action-filled, and there's occasionally a little bit of carnage, just like in NASCAR as well. And on the Brewfest side, we have 12 breweries already committed, and it should be a great lineup of local craft beers from around Colorado and especially here in Wheat Ridge. So, we're excited for that day. So, mark that on your calendars, Sunday, June 11th. If you are a person who might like to give back to the community by volunteering a little bit, you can get a T-shirt and a couple free tastes of beer. So, if that sounds like a good deal to you, do sign up at wearelocalworks.org. Finally, I just wanted to also thank you for your support of community outreach and engagement, where we have now just dropped our next postcard with all the events that are coming up for the next four months. So, these should be hitting your mailboxes quite soon. Look for all sorts of things like our Welcome to Wheat Ridge bus tour coming up on May 13th. That's a good, fun time to see your community from a different light, and lots of other active harvest and cleanup activities. So, look for this in your mail, and otherwise, you can find all of the event details on wearelocalworks.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any other speakers. Okay, we can move on to the approval of the agenda. We have a little change in the agenda tonight, just because there was a little bit of a mix-up when it was laid out. Item 2 will be moved and read with the consent agenda, and item 1B will be read separately and voted upon. So, Mr. Pond, would you go ahead and read your consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to present the consent agenda. Item A, motion to award ITB-17-11 concrete rehabilitation and ADA improvements, project base bid and bid alternate 1 to Majestic Concrete Contractors Incorporated, Golden, Colorado, in the amount of $223,403.20, with a contingency amount of $11,170 for a total of $234,573.20. Consent item B, Resolution 11-2017 approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lakewood providing for resurfacing of 32nd Avenue between Union Street and Kipling Street with an estimated cost of $97,695.98 to the City of Wheat Ridge. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
May I ask for a clarification?
Yes.
Thought 1B was getting moved to 2, and 2 is getting moved to 1B.
1B, no, item 2 was moved. Let me see. Let me write it right here. Item 2 was moved, was read, and put under the consent agenda, and item 1B will be read separately, and actually, you're the one who'll be reading that. Okay, are you comfortable? Good. We had a motion, and we needed a second?
Second.
Oh, you did? Did you finish your motion?
I did not.
Okay, please. But we know who's going to second it.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Ms. Duran, would you like to second that?
Second.
No other questions? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, now we'll move to item 2, which is -- we do have some sign-up sheets for item 2. Okay. And that's all three. All right. Item 2, Ms. Hoppy, would you read that? It's the old 1B, formerly 1B.
Resolution number 12-2017, a resolution establishing a street width for 29th Avenue from Ingalls Street to Fenton Street, for Fenton Street from 29th Avenue to 30th Avenue, and for 30th Avenue from Harland Street to Fenton Street. At issue, City Council approved a special use permit and an intergovernmental agreement with Denver Water on September 10th, 2012, to allow reconstruction of the Ashland Reservoir improperly located at 2901 Fenton Street, which included street improvements to the adjacent streets. In addition to Denver Water's project, the city had planned to straighten 29th Avenue at Fenton Street. In order to simplify design and construction coordination, the city is currently negotiating with Denver Water to construct the street improvements and be reimbursed for their share. The city is well underway with the design work, and as part of the implementation process, a street width designation is required in accordance with the provisions of the city charter. Construction is expected to be completed this summer. Financial impact, funding for the portion of the project that was originally Denver Water's responsibility will be provided by Denver Water. The funding arrangement has not been finalized but will likely involve Denver Water providing funding for their portion of the bid once the prices have been received. Funding for the city portion of the project has been approved in the Minor Street Improvement Project line item of the 2017 capital improvement program budget in the amount of $435,000.
Thank you. I see this is written up as a public hearing. We just opened the public hearing. Staff, have any discussion on this?
We do.
Oh, we do. Show and tell.
Sorry, I was late. I was meeting with some residents and lost track of where you guys were on the agenda. I thought the citizen's right to speak was going to take a lot longer.
I have a very short PowerPoint to show you all, just to sort of get us where we need to be on this.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
I always pick a scripture for my password, and I've got to quit picking something in Isaiah because I can never type it right the first time.
Kristi is suggesting we do this study session within the regular meetings so the woman doesn't have to wait so long. I told her she would have to propose that. Does it change? I don't know how long her report is, but I imagine that other people would be interested in hearing it anyway, because she's going to have to wait a long time.
Again, I apologize. I was upstairs meeting with some residents on this very topic. So, we're just here to talk about the street width. The reason we're here, talking about this, if I can get that thing to disappear, is this is what the Denver Water site, the Ashland Reservoir site, looked like back in 2012, if you can believe it's been five years since this whole thing kind of started. And then, in 2014--
At least a plan out there. Because honestly, when you say if you go down 29th, it kind of looks like a third world, like backstreets of Bangladesh or something like that with lines going all over, poles leaning and I don't know, that's a commonly used one in District One and that gets me in it too. Like, when's District One gonna get something undergrounded, you know? I know you guys have had some great things. We'd love to see some over on our side. And just generally a policy or a plan for citizens or even business owners to formally go out there to get, you know, our cities improved, you know, and that visual aspect. So, you know, that's the main basis of it all because really the residents pay this tax out there on their bill, at least this 1%. And if we have a plan moving forward for something else, please include us because it's out there. For the fun of it, I just might even focus on 30th Street between Sheridan and Fenton. It's a perfect candidate out there. So, I'll stop by, visit Patrick later in the week, and we'll discuss on how we can start. Maybe it's a good project, maybe it's a bad, but it's a step forward. So, thank you, City Council. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Jesse. Britta Fisher.
Good evening. My name's Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I'm the Executive Director of Local Works, an organization serving all of the city. And I happen to live in District One. And Jesse, that was a most excellent suggestion of to wear to Underground Utilities. This evening, I wanted to thank you for your support of community building events and to remind you that we have a large event coming up, and that is the Criterium and Brewfest on Ridge at 38. That's Sunday, June 11th. And we'll have activities going on from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, lots of things. And for those of you who aren't familiar, a Criterium is a short-loop bicycle race. It's like NASCAR on wheels that are of the two-wheeled variety. And so, it's pretty fun, pretty action-filled, and there's occasionally a little bit of carnage, just like in NASCAR as well. And on the Brewfest side, we have 12 breweries already committed, and it should be a great lineup of local craft beers from around Colorado and especially here in Wheat Ridge. So, we're excited for that day. So, mark that on your calendars, Sunday, June 11th. If you are a person who might like to give back to the community by volunteering a little bit, you can get a tee-shirt and a couple free tastes of beer. So, if that sounds like a good deal to you, do sign up at wearelocalworks.org. Finally, I just wanted to also thank you for your support of community outreach and engagement, where we have now just dropped our next postcard with all the events that are coming up for the next four months. So, these should be hitting your mailboxes quite soon. Look for all sorts of things like our Welcome to Wheat Ridge bus tour coming up on May 13th. That's a good, fun time to see your community from a different light, and lots of other active harvest and cleanup activities. So, look for this in your mail. And otherwise, you can find all of the event details on wearelocalworks.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any other speakers. Okay. We can move on to the approval of the agenda. We have a little change in the agenda tonight, just because there was a little bit of a mix-up when it was laid out. Item Two will be moved and read with the Consent Agenda, and Item 1B will be read separately and voted upon. So, Mr. Pan, would you go ahead and read your Consent Agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to present the Consent Agenda. Item A, Motion to Award ITB-17-11 Concrete Rehabilitation and ADA Improvements, Project Base Bid and Bid Alternate 1 to Majestic Concrete Contractors Incorporated, Golden, Colorado, in the amount of $223,403.20, with a contingency amount of $11,170 for a total of $234,573.20. Consent Item B, Resolution 11-2017 Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Lakewood Providing for Resurfacing of 32nd Avenue Between Union Street and Kipling Street With an Estimated Cost of $97,695.98 to the City of Wheat Ridge. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
May I ask for a clarification?
Yes.
Thought 1B was getting moved to 2, and 2 is getting moved to 1B.
1B. No, Item 2 was moved. Let me see. Let me write it right here. Item 2 was moved, was read and put under the Consent Agenda, and Item 1B will be read separately. And actually, you're the one who'll be reading that. Are you comfortable? Good. We had a motion, and we needed a second?
Second.
Oh, did you finish your motion?
I did not.
Okay, please. But we know who's gonna second it.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Ms. Duran, would you like to second that?
Second.
Second it. No other questions? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, now we'll move to Item 2, which is...
That's the sign-up sheet.
We do have some sign-up sheets for Item 2. Okay.
That's all three.
And that's all three. All right. Item 2. Ms. Hoppy, would you read that? It's the old 1B, formerly 1B.
Resolution Number 12-2017, A Resolution Establishing a Street Width for 29th Avenue from Ingalls Street to Fenton Street, for Fenton Street from 29th Avenue to 30th Avenue, and for 30th Avenue from Harland Street to Fenton Street. At issue, City Council approved a special use permit and an intergovernmental agreement with Denver Water on September 10th, 2012, to allow reconstruction of the Ashland Reservoir improperly located at 2901 Fenton Street, which included street improvements to the adjacent streets. In addition to Denver Water's project, the city had planned to straighten 29th Avenue at Fenton Street. In order to simplify design and construction coordination, the city is currently negotiating with Denver Water to construct the street improvements and be reimbursed for their share. The city is well underway with the design work, and as part of the implementation process, a street width designation is required in accordance with the provisions of the city charter. Construction is expected to be completed this summer. Financial impact, funding for the portion of the project that was originally Denver Water's responsibility will be provided by Denver Water. The funding arrangement has not been finalized, but will likely involve Denver Water providing funding for their portion of the bid once the prices have been received. Funding for the city portion of the project has been approved in the Minor Street Improvement Project line item of the 2017 Capital Improvement Program budget in the amount of $435,000.
Thank you. I see this is written up as a public hearing. We just opened the public hearing. Staff have any discussion on this?
We do.
Oh, we do. Show and tell.
Sorry, I was late. I was meeting with some residents and lost track of where you guys were on the agenda. I thought the citizen's right to speak was gonna take a lot longer. I have a very short PowerPoint to show you all, just to sort of get us where we need to be on this.
That's a great idea.
I always pick a scripture for my password, and I've gotta quit picking something in Isaiah because I can never type it right the first time. Kristi is suggesting we do this study session within the regular meetings, so the woman doesn't have to wait so long. I told her she would have to propose that as a change. I don't know how long her report is, but I imagine that other people would be interested in hearing it anyway, because she's gonna have to wait a long time. Again, I apologize. I was upstairs meeting with some residents on this very topic. So, we're just here to talk about the street width. The reason we're here, talking about this, if I can get that thing to disappear, is this is what the Denver Water site, the Ashland Reservoir site, looked like back in 2012, if you can believe it's been five years since this whole thing kind of started. And then, in 2014, it looked like this. They had gotten the two tanks removed, had one tank built, and the other tank started. And what they hoped to land on is to have it look something like this. What this allows us to do in particular on the south end is to straighten out 29th and remove that traffic signal. We've looked at the warrants for that signal. The signal does not meet warrants except for the fact that there was the giant hill next to it because of the Denver Water tanks. And Denver Water was obligated to add streetscape improvements to 30th Avenue and also to Fenton, and also to 29th. We were obligated to straighten out 29th and do the rest of the work down there. So, what we did a while back was to approach them and say, hey, we think we can get better prices if we do all this as one big project. And then they don't have to pull a right-of-way permit. We just get to do all the work and oversee it, and they're gonna help us pay for that. So, what's on the docket tonight is the street width designation process that we're going through. It's measured face of curb to face of curb, which is what in the code is defined as flow line. So, the existing and proposed widths out there vary. 29th Avenue doesn't have curb in this part of the world, and so we sort of measure from the two white lines on either side, which also varies a little bit, but in general is 22 feet. We've got a public hearing process that we're doing tonight. And then, just as a reminder, the construction has to start within one year of this street width designation, and we were on schedule. We should be on schedule for that. And we've been following the process and the procedures per the city charter. The city budget for this is about $435,000. That's in the budget for this year. Denver Water, we're currently negotiating those terms, and we're working on the cost estimates right now to figure out how much their share's gonna be. And we hope to come back to you on May 22nd to have the IGA amendment approved. But we're trying to work out. The only thing that we're stuck on right now is how they reimburse us. Do they give us all the money upfront, and we put it in account? Do we pay out of it, or do we pay it and then we get reimbursed like we do on a lot of the federal aid projects? So, we're trying to figure out how they want to do that, and I've not heard back from them on that. There's also a piece of this project that is in Edgewater, potentially in Edgewater, assuming they want to do this also. Our project, we've got to get almost to Ingalls Street in order to straighten the road out. And so, we're just gonna go ahead and continue the rest of the way to Ingalls Street is what we're proposing on the north side, which is our side, so that we can tie into the existing sidewalks and also just straighten that road out and get sidewalk through that whole area and do what we want to do. We've shown design on Edgewater side also for that entire distance, once we hit their city boundary. And they've indicated that they're interested in doing that. It's not in this year's budget, so maybe the kind of thing, again, we pay for it, we get reimbursed next year from them. But again, we've got to get those cost estimates finished and finish those negotiations with them on that. So, this is what the street looks like on 29th. The section west of Gray Street is mostly 26 feet wide with the curb and gutter. We do have some pockets of on-street parking that we're proposing, but not the entire stretch is on-street parking. And so, we're sticking with our street width would be that 26 feet. It wouldn't include the on-street parking because there's just pockets of that. There's more non-on-street than there is on-street. And then, east of Gray, between Gray and Fenton Street, we're proposing 32 feet because on that south side, the entire south side, we're showing on-street parking down that south side. And then, east of Fenton Street, we're not changing the width of that street. As we straighten it, the width of the street actually stays the same. And the part that's a little bit different is below that 250-foot limit that we have. And then on Fenton Street, Fenton Street right now does have curb and gutter on both sides, but it's substandard in width by two feet. And if you've ever driven Fenton Street, there are lots of on-street parking on Fenton Street, and you can definitely tell that it's missing the two feet, especially if you drive like a truck or something. The city Hondas, it's not too bad, but everything else is pretty scary to drive Fenton Street. And so, our proposal is to widen Fenton Street by a couple of feet. Now, in order to do that, we're gonna shrink that tree lawn area down to four feet because we're trying to keep that sidewalk location, the same location that was in Denver Water's plans, because they've got some landscaping proposed behind the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the fence. And so, to do that then with a four-foot, it's really hard to keep grass alive. And with the number of people that park there every single day, we don't think the grass will stay alive there. And so, we're proposing to put in a paved domedias on that side. And we're looking at, because we still want to put all the trees that were supposed to be there, we're looking at putting in porous pavers so the rainwater would fall through and be able to help keep the trees alive instead of just having a little grate to the tree. We'd have these porous pavers to help that. So, we're still exploring those options. And we'll be talking with Denver Water. The porous pavers is actually the Denver Water's idea. And then, on 30th Avenue, for some reason, 30th Avenue was built extra-wide back in the day. And again, to allow as much room as possible on Denver's Waters site for landscaping behind the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the fence, we've always proposed, in the Denver Water plans also, to shrink 30th Avenue to our normal width of 38 feet from curb face to curb face, which is the same width that Fenton would fence gonna have. So, we're just shrinking that road up a little bit, removing some of the asphalt so that we can get that to our normal width for allowing on-street parking on both sides. And again, we'd have tree lawn and sidewalk, and then they'll have some more landscaping between the sidewalk and their fence. And the idea behind all that was just to try to provide as much landscaping on the outside of that fence to help mitigate the look of the fence and everything. So, we hope to have, in mid-May, we hope to have our 90% plans complete. In June, we hope to have our 100% plans complete, and then advertise for bids. And then, we would hope to come back to you on July 24th to award a construction contract. Those dates may move a little bit depending on how quickly we can work things out with Edgewater and finalize everything with Denver Water. But that's our proposal. And then, we would start construction sometime in August and try to get this thing wrapped up. It's not a really big project, but we do have quite a bit of work to do. We coordinated all this with Denver Water's schedule and what they're doing, both onsite and offsite. They should have all of their stuff out of the way by the time we start working out there. And then, construction will start in August. And that's literally the second shortest PowerPoint I've ever done. Because I was nervous because I was so late, it was also probably the fastest, though. So, I'm just available for any questions for me.
Council have questions at this point? Well, we have Mr. Westburg. Done quite a job. We do have three people who wish to speak on this subject. Now, we have four. Okay. Would you stand close by, and I'll bring those forward to come up. Maria Nicholas? Or Mario, maybe it is. I believe it's Mario. That looks like a Mario.
Good evening. It is Mario Nicholas, though at one point in time, the Social Security Administration had me. This is Maria, so...
You're a little sensitive on that.
You're in good company or poor company, depending on what you think of Social Security Administration. My name is Mario Nicholas. I am General Counsel for Vivage Senior Living. We are the management company for Wheat Ridge Manor, which is the property that is to the east side on Fenton Street of Denver Water Plant. Additionally, our CEO, I believe, owns the property, the other properties that are on Fenton Street between 29th and 30th. And in general, we certainly support this plan. We think that widening the street will, first, it'll make it safer for our residents that are at that property by allowing more space, so less ability for, more space for people to walk through, and more space for cars to avoid residents or any of the families who are exiting cars. The only thing that we would ask the City Council to potentially consider and to look at is, I understand currently the City of Wheat Ridge does not have an ordinance that allows for 30-degree, 45-degree, 60-degree, or 90-degree parking. For us, that would be important because not only would allow for more parking for our families, encourage them to come and visit our residents, but furthermore, we believe it would make it safer for them exiting cars and getting into cars. First of all, because they would not be exiting into traffic. Second of all, because they would, since they would be closer to the actual entrance of the nursing facility, there's less distance to travel. And when you're dealing with the elderly or the disabled, a few feet, especially in winter, can make a big difference. So, we always like to try to limit that. I understand that would require changes in some of the plans that have already gone, and we are coming a little bit late to this particular issue. But something we would, in general, like to at least propose, because we would certainly apply for having that change made in our parking in front of our facility. I do not know whether that would require an additional widening of the street. Sounds like the trees are gonna die anyway, so if we wanted to widen it a couple more feet, we would certainly, and I do not know what the rules on that would be, or how wide it needs to be to accommodate that kind of parking. But we would love to work with the City of Wheat Ridge on that. I will end just simply by saying we do, in general, support the widening of the street and thank the City Council for looking into it. I'm glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mario.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Jay Moskowitz, I think it is. Jay. Close enough, followed by Catlin Schwartz.
I trust that. Don't worry about me.
You don't want to... Okay.
My name is Jay Moskowitz. One of the owners of Wheat Ridge Nursery Home. Been working there since 1981, president of Vivage Senior Living. We operate approximately 30 facilities in the state of Colorado, communities for long-term care. I grew up at Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Nursery Home in this profession, and I watched the changes go on at Wheat Ridge. And it's been a really good partnership between the city and whenever we had needs, Chris and Meredith over the years, to come and speak to him. Just found out about the widening of the street, what triggered us, Mario and I, to come and speak to you tonight, understanding that ordinance does not allow parallel parking, angled parking. We'd like to ask City Council, and we plan to come back if allowed to, to discuss it further. We appreciate Denver changing the reservoir across the street. It's definitely benefited our community, but at the same token, we really have suffered through the changes the last few years as they've closed 29th and widened it. And I have a financial impact study showing how much hundreds of thousands of dollars we lost in a period of time, same as we did at Christopher House when they widened the street there, people couldn't get into our facility. So, that's, you know, being a part of the city, I appreciate the widening we're doing. But as Mario said, the angled parking would definitely make a difference. And as you spoke about, widening going in, the people get out of cars right now, walk on that grass that you're saying was never gonna come back. By doing, parallel park, by doing angled parking, we won't have that issue. It could be grass there. We won't have to walk on that side of the west side of the street because people getting out of cars would be walking across the street. As Mario mentioned, the other three houses on the block are part of the facility. We use offices, and we also have non-offices for, we have staff members who live in those houses. So, we think it would benefit our residents and help with having one-sided street parking only, have emergency vehicle parking in front of the facility, ambulances and fire engines, et cetera, but have all visitor parking on the west side of the street. So, if the city would consider that, we'd be glad to come back and speak further on this issue. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Jay, I don't know that you gave your address.
My address will be 2932 Fenton Street, Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge.
Fenton. Okay, thank you.
Could you spell your last name, please?
I can. You want me to spell for you? M-O-S-K-O-W-I-T-Z.
O-W. Doesn't look close enough. And I believe our, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
For your information. Ray Maggie, M-A-G-E-E.
Hi. So, yeah, it's Ray McGee, and I'm the owner and a resident of the property sits right at 29th and Ingalls Street. I've owned that property since 2001. I have five parking spaces in front of the building facing 29th Avenue. And it sounds like I'm not the only one here with issues relating to parking. There was a public meeting regarding the project of curb and veteran sidewalk along 29th several months ago, but in that meeting, I wasn't informed that my parking would be reduced from five spaces to two spaces. In addition to that, there's a building in its orbit that has 12 two-bedroom units, potentially 24 adults living there. They currently have eight parking spaces. That's gonna, no, they currently have 16, and that's gonna be reduced, I think, to 12 with the widening plan. I'm not opposed to widening, per se, but there's gonna be a lot of parking problems in that area. If the current plan by Mr. Westburg is approved, I'm a little upset that I wasn't informed in this public hearing several months ago that my parking would be reduced to five to two. It's a building with two two-bedroom apartments and one bedroom apartment, potentially five adults, and two parking spaces isn't adequate. There's already a parking problem in the neighborhood because the 12-unit building next door to my property doesn't have enough as it is, and that's gonna be reduced. So, these cars are gonna be scattered all over the neighborhood, and it's gonna adversely impact a lot of Wheat Ridge residents. I've talked to Mr. Westburg, and it doesn't seem that I can say or do anything to persuade him of the adverse impact on residents regarding the parking. So, I'm hoping that somebody here will take up on that.
Ray, you've already had discussions with the city about it? Did I understand that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Council, any questions or comments at this point?
Questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe that's our last speaker on that item number. And council doesn't have any questions. I'm gonna close the public meeting.
So, Mr. Westburg, could you kind of respond as some of, you know, the possibilities of the diagonal parking possibility, and then also the reduction in parking, especially in front of multi-family types of units?
Yes, I certainly can. So, what's happening on Fenton Street, as you can see in the aerial here, that there's a lot of cars parked on both sides. This is the, and I can't remember the name of your facility, so I apologize for that. This is the assisted living facility. The road is, like I said, substantial. Now, we're gonna widen by two feet to allow the, you know, better parallel parking on both sides. We don't allow the angled parking or the head-in parking on our streets. In our code, it doesn't allow that. The only kind of angled parking we allow is back-in parking that we had on 38th at one point and still have in one very small location. So, and I don't, I don't recommend that. The reason we don't allow the angled parking is if someone's trying to back into the street, you know, it's not like, you do that in parking lots because people are driving five or 10 miles an hour. This is a 25 mile an hour street, and if someone's trying to bike it back out, there's just a lot of risk involved in that. So, that's the reason we wouldn't allow the angled parking along that street. I think, you know, certainly improving things to make it wide enough for people to more easily drive between the cars that are parked parallel there is a, we think we're improving the existing situation. We don't have enough right-of-way to add, even if we were inclined to, which I wouldn't be inclined to support. We wouldn't have enough right-of-way to add that. It takes another, you know, five or 10 feet of right-of-way to be able to do that angled parking. We just don't have that available within our existing right-of-way that we've got on there today. So, without, like, you know, getting rid of all the amenity zones and sidewalks and everything that's planned, I think those are real important to trying to reduce the impact of continuing to have that Denver Water facility on that west side of the street. The other location that was mentioned is down here, these two properties. This property today, you can see this is where the road starts to wiggle back. This property today, the road tends to be towards maybe the southern end of the right-of-way a little bit, but they've got, you know, maybe nine parking spaces there today. And what they do is they double-park frequently, is they'll just park behind the next set of cars in the right-of-way on the gravel. And we've actually had some people with longer vehicles. There was one, like, large Cadillac or town car or something that parked there, whose back end actually overhung into the road. And I think we had to send folks, the police, out to mitigate that, to have them move it. But we, you know, we certainly, we're trying to improve this all the Ingalls, again, to connect up to this sidewalk and just improve the stretch of the roadway to, you know, sort of match what we've got on the east side of Fenton Street. We're working to put some more on-street parking in the locations, and we've approached, we're gonna approach Edgewater, once we have our estimate done, to do on-street parking along some of this property to the south. And then, in the plan, it showed a potential mid-block crossing. They've got an apartment building here also that backs into the street, and I've got a proposal to give them the same number of parking spaces by redoing their parking lot a little bit and give them discreet driveways, same thing on this side, in order to allow a place where we could put a mid-block crossing that's got one of our rapid flashing beacons on it to help people can push the button and then get across there. So, we're proposing that because we think that these folks, you know, there are often 12 to 24 cars parked here, and they're gonna need someplace to go. And so, we're hoping they'll maybe use the south side of the street and then use that mid-block crossing to cross back and forth more safely. In front of this property, this is the other property that was mentioned, there's an unimproved shoulder here. We've got that all up and down 29th. We've just got the gravel shoulders all up and down 29th. We've got some drainage issues down in this part of the world that we're hoping to fix with this project also. And in theory, you can fit five cars in here today. When we do our project, and I can flash those plans back up, when we do our project down there, we've got a, when we build a project, we've got to build it such that it meets the site triangle at the corner and stuff, and on this kind of road, which is a collector, we've got to have a 50-foot site triangle. And so, there is a limit here. This is Ingalls Street, and this is that property. They just, they have the ability to park along this entire thing today. When we do a project and curb gutter, we've got to have that 50 feet in here, and then they've got a driveway here. And so, it only allows us to put enough parking spaces in for probably two cars. in for, for probably two cars. And so, that's the comment about we're going from five cars to two cars. But, we can't, we can't continue on-street parking all the way to Ingalls, we'd have to, there'd be a sign, "No parking from here to corner." We're trying to provide a little bit of tree lawn here so we can put a tree or two in here at the end of the street, again, to sort of match what we're doing up and down the street. So, that's the reason that's happening. That property does run Ingalls Street, so they would have parking along Ingalls Street, and they've, they've got, you know, sort of my comment to, to both of those property owners is that, that we as a city aren't necessarily obligated to provide all your parking spaces. We certainly provide on-street parking in a lot of places. If you're short on parking, you should look on your own sites and see what you can do to maybe reconfigure those to provide more parking spaces. I certainly don't wanna do something that's be detrimental to, in violation of what our code says regarding angled parking on a city street or regarding the site triangles at the corner, so.
Thank you for that. Ms. Hoppe?
Mark Waller, on this slide, can you tell us, you said that that's an unimproved shoulder currently, so it, it belongs to the city, it just has not been utilized by the city? Okay, thanks.
And a lot of the people up and down the street, we've got that on both sides of the street, a lot of people park on both sides of the street today. They don't park in front of the Ashland Reservoir property because that, that burn comes right down to the edge of the street today. But, and then, part of their IGA was to do that tree lawn in front, so we're trying to hole with what was in the IGA and in their special use permit, to have the sidewalk and the tree lawn along this stretch.
So, specific, so those specific spots on the street that are just unimproved shoulder, the intention was not that the city was, was doing that for people to park there, it just was an unimproved piece of city property?
Yeah, right. And, and a lot of our streets that don't have curb and gutter, we often have gravel shoulders on the sides, and people often park there, that's, it's that way all up and down 29th Avenue, I, I don't dispute that at all. We were fortunate, sort of east of here, that when we did that project, we just pretty much paved the whole thing. Part of the trick is that we, you know, we really can't just widen this road out this whole distance, because we've got, because, it's really because of ADA issues the biggest difference of what's happened, what's changed. When we build driveways, we've gotta be able to have those driveways be passable by someone in a wheelchair today, and same thing when we get to the corners on the intersection. So, the ADA changes a lot of what we are able to do with driveways and stuff. It's better to have that sidewalk be detached and have the drive, the slope part of the driveway in front versus having the drive. What we're doing here is we're, we're doing that where we actually dip the entire driveway down, the sidewalk will be down at street level and then come back up again. We prefer not to do that only where we have to, and so that's the reason that we've, we've got, like, this is a discreet driveway now, not just, you know, where the, where people just drive over the sidewalk right from the street.
Any other questions or comments from council? I'm going to close the public hearing. And I need a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 12-2017, a resolution establishing street widths for 29th Avenue from Ingalls Street to Fenton Street, for Fenton Street from 29th Avenue to 30th Avenue, and for 30th Avenue to Harland Street, oh, from Harland Street to Fenton Street. Second?
Seconded, was that Mr. N?
Oh, wait, don't vote yet.
Okay, you can vote now.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number three. And item number three is first reading. I have 13, 16 people signed up for first read, for comments. We don't usually allow commentary on first reading unless the council does allow that. So, I will need a motion to allow that if that's what the council is pleased to do.
Motion to allow public comment?
Right.
Second?
Seconded by?
Mr. N.
Mr. N.
So, the council's aware that's a waiver of the rules, requires a three-quarter majority of council present, three-quarters of seven is five and a quarter, and the rule under the case law is always you round up, no matter where, what fraction you're at, so that, this motion would need to pass by six votes.
Are you ready to cast your vote?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, then we can go ahead and go forward on this, item number three. Mr. Urban, are you reading for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill Number 08-2017, an ordinance referring a ballot question at the regular municipal election on November 7th, 2017, concerning the restriping and repaving design configuration of 38th Avenue between Sheridan Boulevard and Wadsworth Boulevard with an estimated cost of 90, let's see, let's see, of $750,000, but that's not the right one. That's, sorry, there was a misprint. So, with an estimated cost of $750,000 to the city of Wheatridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we need, we can go into public comment then, right away. And we have, as I said, several lined up. I don't think we have any staff report on this, of course not. I'm gonna ask you to line up on the left side so that we move it along, since we have so many folks here, and starting with Herb Schillhoff, I'm not quite sure, 3900 Garrison Street. Hello, Herb? John Genova, Karen Stanley, and Karen Harrison. And I remind everybody that this is not a time for rooting or applauding or whatever. The council would like to hear everybody and treat, and everybody to feel as though they were treated fairly. So, I would appreciate you being kind to whomever is speaking. Go ahead, Herb, please spell your last name for this.
Yes, Herb Schill, S-C-H-I-L-L-E-R-E-F-F, 3900 Garrison Street.
Thank you.
We moved here in '63, built our house, '64, and have lived there ever since. And we really do enjoy Wheatridge. I have basically been opposed to two lanes from the beginning, but off and on, it seemed like it might be a good idea. However, you've planned on trees, you've planned on different sidewalks, but you've never done anything. I think it ought to go back to four lanes, and especially have it where the citizens can vote on it. Let us vote on it and then decide what to do. And I'd also suggest, you know, they're going to widen Lodsworth to six lanes, I believe, down to the highway. I believe you ought to widen 38th from Sheridan, clear out to Youngfield. You're going to have an awful lot of cars here in a few years, and then making Lodsworth six lanes. You're not going to be able to keep that traffic out of here. So, I'd like to hope that you consider putting it on the ballot and allow us to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Kanye and Harrison, would you also line up? I'll announce after each, everybody speaks. John?
John Genova, 3430 Otis Street, Wheatridge, shade 0033. So, I can't believe I have to step up to this podium yet again to comment on this problem that isn't a problem, and at least it wasn't a problem until his ballot question was introduced. The community has repeatedly voiced support for a pedestrian-friendly 38th Avenue Main Street, a safe downtown area that meets the needs of pedestrians and vehicle, vehicle traffic alike. For those on council who struggle with using a tape measure, as an engineer, I can assure you that you can't fit the wide sidewalks, the amenity zones, and the parking, and the four-lane of traffic in this combined rideaway. You really wanna spend $750,000 on Wheatridge's, Wheatridge's money on a project that does not meet the amenity requirements spelled out by the community? That doesn't make any sense. We do want safe traffic, we want safe traffic, calm, walkable downtown. At the price tag set for this project, what we'll get is a rideaway for vehicles and maybe a few trees as decoration. It makes much more sense to spend that $750,000 solving tangible problems, and there are many infrastructure problems in Wheatridge which should take precedence. Turning 38th Avenue back into a freeway betrays the trust of the citizens who participated in all the public meetings, where we all work together as a community to come to a consensus on this topic. That betrayal and the fiscal responsibility of this measure is a slap in the face. I urge you to vote now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Still Kanye Harrison I'm looking for, as well as, looks like Simba Wilson. Come on forward.
Hello, council. My name is Karen Stanley, and I'm, that's S-T-A-N-L-E-Y. My address is 4055 Ames Street. And I wrote council a letter regarding this issue on April 17th, and I just wanna reiterate some of the main points. I feel putting this on the ballot is disingenuous to the creative 38th process. I feel that that was extensive public outreach, and the public spoke during that process. I also feel that Wheatridge is finally creating a neighborhood space, a space where the residents can go and meet with one another for celebrations at the Ridge of 38th. It's also a great place for the community to go to local shops, local restaurants, and people wanna go there through different forms of transportation. They wanna bike there, they wanna walk there, and take their cars there. And I don't think creating a freeway through there is what the community really wants. I also am concerned with the safety of the elementary school that is right there. Creating four lanes, people rushing through this area is not a right way for kids to get to school, not safe. And I just wanted to add that I drove this area downtown every day, back and forth during rush hour, and going from four lanes down to three only added maybe 60 seconds to two minutes to my commute, and it wasn't that bad. And I wanna thank you for letting me speak on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get Sundari Kraft and Christine Disney lined up as well. And please come forward, give us your name, address.
Good evening, my name is Amber Wilson, residence at 5690 West 38th Ave., Unit D Delta. Property spelling is W-Y-L-S-O-N. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as the vice president of the Perrins Row HOA Board. Perrins Row is in District One at 38th and DePew. We have got 26 units with 50-plus residents. The consensus of our community is that this issue should not go to vote. The, the restriping of the lanes between the 38th, 38th Avenue between Wadsworth and Sheridan shouldn't go to public vote because many Wheatridge residents don't have a vested interest in this geographical location. We're right on 38th. It is home to us. To kind of echo the sentiments of the previous speakers, many of us moved to that community for the charm, for the walkability, for the safetiness, and it's just a sweet little place, and we'd like to keep it that way. We don't think four lanes of traffic is gonna help that at all. As you all know, having the street parking was a major force in having a viable community in Perrins Row. We have a handicapped resident who would not have a dedicated handicap space if that one space in front of her unit was taken away. That is, that is top of our list, is the, the safety and comfort of our residents. So, keep it short and sweet, thank you for letting me speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Kim Calomino and John Clark? Sundari?
Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of council? My name is Sundari Kraft, that's K-R-A-F-T. I live with my family at 3495 Ames Street in District One. I am here tonight to respectfully request that you not refer the 38th Avenue question to the ballot. One of the primary reasons I keep hearing to justify the idea is that somehow this is going to settle it once and for all, right? We keep hearing that. Yesterday, I emailed all of you an article that described high drama in Wheatridge and a lot of contention around the number of lanes, right? Sound familiar? That article was published in Westward back in 1994, yeah. Here we are, 23 years later and counting, there is absolutely no credible reason to believe that a single ballot question in a given year will somehow solve this issue once and for all unless the ballot question comes with a magic wand. A vote this year cannot be expected to solve this issue any more than a public debate did in 1994, or a vote on funding three years ago, or the multi-stage comprehensive community process last year. The timing of this issue is especially ill-advised because 38th Avenue is on the cusp of a significant transformation, with new developments about to begin at 38th and Wadsworth and 38th and Uppam. It's not even as if there's a pressing need for this to be discussed now, as I think other people have just talked about. It's a guaranteed community battle without an underlying problem. Our treasurer has recently reported to us that the businesses along 38th have not experienced a decrease in sales, and there is not a safety issue caused by the current configuration. Pushing this issue onto the ballot would be the embodiment of wasteful government. It is a waste, not only of three-quarters of a million dollars, but almost more importantly, I think, a waste of council's time and attention, and a drain on the social capital of the engaged Wheatridge citizens who truly want to be doing things to make our city better. We have real issues, I love living in Wheatridge, but we have real problems. We have some problems with crime, true infrastructure needs, street safety, we have people in our community experiencing homelessness and people who are food insecure. I'm sure every one of you has talked to your constituents and heard about real issues that you could be working on to serve our community rather than tilting at the windmill that is 38th Avenue again, and again, and again. So, please, use your time, which is very valuable, use our real money to focus on real problems, and I ask you not to refer this much, this to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Hulteen after John Clark?
My name is Christine Disney, my last name is spelled D-I-S-N-E-Y-M-O-U-S-E, no kidding. And I live in District Two. After the successful passage of 2E, this city finally felt like a united front working towards a common goal of bringing Wheatridge into the 21st century. But alas, that honeymoon lasted four months, and we're back to the same old grind. So, let's take all of that goodwill and dash it on the hopes that our electorate will rally and pass a naive, once-and-for-all ballot measure to bring a few blocks of 38th Avenue back to an average rate of speed of 45 miles per hour. That's it. That's all this will accomplish. This measure completely ignores the Vision 2035 recently agreed upon by the council sitting here. We have bigger, more pressing issues than the perceived inconvenience of having to slow down for a few blocks. I live off of 38th Avenue where it's five lanes. If I try to turn left on the 38th Avenue at certain times of the day, I sit there for a long time. It doesn't matter if it's five lanes, or four lanes, or three lanes. Turning left into traffic takes a long time. Traffic counts are the same as they were when 38th was reconfigured. Sales tax revenue is up. Businesses and residents, as we've learned tonight, have moved here because of the three-lane design. All signs point to its success. So, instead of moving forward, we step back into the spirit of division and acrimony. 38th is working as it is. Let's spend this money for real problems. Our schools need some funding, the burgeoning homeless problem is right in front of our face, and we have an increase of drugs and crime in our town. So, let's focus on something that's really important and not keep going back to the same old grind with 38th. I urge you to kill this on the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, Steve, flip forward, after Rachel Hulteen, be Eric Wilson.
Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street, District Two. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I care about our emergent Main Street, and I care about a political environment that draws people in to engage for positive reasons, not in pitched battle. And in these efforts, I think council could be far more helpful than to place this question on the ballot. When we think about our community, its progress, its social and political environment, we need to think more holistically. When economic development is the nut to crack, for example, it would be rare and unwise for a city to choose to ponder a single thread in an entire fabric. And I submit that 38th Avenue is, more than anything else, an economic development opportunity that has already shown great promise. that has already shown great promise and holds so much more. We've seen great outcomes, as council said, "Let's learn what's possible," with such efforts as the launching through Local Works of a marketing effort and the establishment of Ridge at 38th and its leadership group, the installation of pop-up cafes and landscaping, the continued support of Local Works to create large, popular, attention-getting events, and to engage the 38th Avenue business community, and yes, with the restriping to three lanes. The outcomes of these efforts have been great, not only by anecdotal evidence of active 38th Avenue social life and wildly successful street events, but by quantifiable data on tax revenue growth and by no loss of traffic volume while gaining safety in lower traffic speeds. Council took a holistic approach in these efforts. This ballot question does not. It assumes that a single element of a larger plan, a single thread in a whole fabric, can be pulled to either no effect or to great effect. Who knows? This is a narrower and less sophisticated approach than I know we are capable of. I would like to see Wheat Ridge to continue its pursuit of an economically and socially vibrant Main Street in Wheat Ridge. We need to be pulling our best efforts forward, furthering and sustaining a safe, walkable, bikable, drivable, and ADA-accessible Main Street where businesses can thrive, social interactive action is active, and dining and shopping options are diverse and numerous. Instead, I see a return to an unnecessary division, not just on council, but a division foisted on the community. There are many other reasons to oppose this ballot question, but I think I might be almost out of time. So, I will leave it at that and ask that you vote no on this. Don't put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. John Clark? Eric Wilson will follow. Rachel Hulteen.
Hi, my name is John Clark, 4665 Swadley. That's my home address. I just started a business over on 38th and Uppham, so I've actually spent quite a bit of time down there the last couple of months. I read an article by Vince Carroll in the Denver Post. It's either two or three Sundays ago, and it actually spoke to 38th Avenue. So, I actually made some copies of it and highlighted a few points. Don't expect you to read it right now, but maybe think of me tonight when you're reading it in bed. So, we get to talk about 38th again. Been here doing that a lot. So, I have to laugh. Everybody that was here last week at the study session, if you weren't here last week at the study session, and I know, I don't believe anybody out here was, I think everybody here was. We talked to Jefferson County Schools. We had four Wheat Ridge principals. We had the achievement director who spoke for hours about the schools. And I got up and I got a little extra time to speak, and I used 38th Avenue. It was funny because I used the 38th and Wadsworth Walmart as an analogy and asked if anybody spent any time in the schools. And then I used the Wadsworth left turn lanes and asked if anybody went to a board meeting. And it was weird because I used 38th Avenue in the analogy that we spent five or six years talking about it and over a million dollars. And I asked how many people, if anybody could guess how many people were at my last PTA meeting? And nobody knew except for the one principal that was in the room that was there. So, just so everybody knows, because nobody emailed me, there were seven of us. So, 800 people at a Create Your 38th, seven of us at a PTA meeting. So, I asked at that time, "How do you build a great city and get a vision?" And I swear, it starts with schools. And I proposed to everybody that the board, the school boards, are tearing apart our schools, they're closing our schools, and they're gutting our schools, and we can sit here and talk about 38th Avenue for the next 20 years. And I, at this point, I think we probably will. I really do. And I don't care if it's three lanes or four lanes at this point. You guys wore me out. Six lanes? Not safe. Four lanes? Probably not safe. Three? I guarantee it's not safe because I just saw a drag race on Friday night that after the merge point, both trucks were still doing 50 miles an hour eastbound after Uppham. So, you could tear up all the asphalt and make it dirt. It's not going to be safe. I constantly watch the little yellow flashing light, and the kids try to cross the street and count five and six cars go through that light. So, it's not safe at three. Don't give me that. It's not safe at four. I'm not trying to tell you it is. It's not safe to cross I-70, and it's not safe to cross a dirt road. It's not the lanes, it's not the road, it's the people driving it. So, I just, I just had to come down and ask one more time. Is anybody going to go to a school board meeting? While they're gutting our schools, and they're closing our schools, and they're forcing our principals to quit, can we build a great city with three lanes, four lanes, two lanes, eight lanes? It doesn't matter how many frickin' lanes we have. It really doesn't. Get it voted on, get it done, figure it out, and be done. Let's move on to something else. If you want to put it on the ballot, put it on the ballot, figure it out, let everybody vote on it, and do it. And let's stop lollygagging, figure it out. Let's move on to something. Me and Christine Disney finally agree on something. Let's move on, okay? Let's move on to what's really important. Let's start with the schools because you guys can, everybody out here can think three lanes is going to be the fix-all for this city. And as they're gutting our schools, nobody's paying attention. Nobody sees it. You think you're going to have a great city because you have three lanes, walkability? But you got crap schools because you weren't watching. You let them tear you apart. So, that's all I got. I actually just came down to give you guys that article. Once I saw, and I use the 38th analogy, what did I say last week, people? Two of us, two of us showed up last week when the school board was here. Myself and Susan Miller, the past PTSA president and the current PTA president ever, two people showed up to talk about schools. How many showed up to talk about 38th? It's a crime. It's literally a crime.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Moving on, I don't see Eric Wilson. Bill Cosselemann, followed by Al Gallo.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Hulteen, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And I'm about to say two things that are probably going to surprise you. One is, I'm about to agree with John. And I'm about to tell you why I support four lanes on 38th Avenue. I support four lanes on 38th Avenue when it's the idea that's leading the completion of sidewalks. If we were to be voting on four lanes because it was part of a vision to create a Main Street that included investing in our sidewalks, and four lanes included slowing the traffic to make sure that the hundreds of kids that go to school right there on that Main Street drag were safe, I would absolutely be delighted to vote in favor of four lanes this fall. However, the ballot measure that's been proposed to us is calling a four-lane restriping revitalization. Revitalization does not include striping a road. Revitalization includes investing in a Main Street that includes sidewalks, landscaping, places for people to rest and enjoy one another. It includes gathering spaces for everyone in our community. So, if we were here tonight to talk about a ballot measure asking for four lanes and asking for the funding that's required to complete our sidewalks, and to include art, and to include placemaking and landscaping and a sense of place that our community has been begging for as long as I've lived in this city, I would be up here giving my enthusiastic yes. And for those of you who don't know me professionally, I work across the state advocating for three-lane road diets. It's my job. But in my own community, I'm tired of talking about how many lanes we need on a street to make our Main Street. If we're going to put something on our ballot this fall, I want to see something that's addressing real problems. Our city has real money, and we should use our real money to address real problems. The only times our city has been asked about three versus four lanes, every time that question has been posed, our citizens have said three lanes. And that is statistically consistent, and that answer has never been "We want four lanes" when it's been asked of our citizenry, which is why I don't understand why this is our leading ballot initiative we're talking about in April. I'm going to share a couple of things with people here, including our council. As we all walked in tonight, there's a quote on the wall outside this room, and it says, "People create the quality of their government through participation or through neglect." Our community has participated again and again in designing a 38th Avenue. How many people in this room spent time going to one or all three of the Create Your 38 Design processes last year? Those processes were paid for by our city to respond to our community's rejection of the previous plan. So, why are we not moving forward the outcome of that participation? Let me share with you. There were six designs that moved forward from the first round. That first round had over 500 citizens in our community provide input. None of those designs included four lanes. In fact, the one-two lane design got more votes than the average four-lane design. There's no metric that has been measured by our city or has been expressed by our citizens that is asking for four lanes. So, until I can see any evidence from our citizenry that four lanes is something that we've been asked and we've said yes, am I willing to support the civic resources it takes to put this on the ballot? I'm asking that the only questions we ask and answer about 38th Avenue are about investing in the vision moving forward that our city has already said they have for Main Street, and not once have they said four lanes. I want to see real money put towards real problems in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Cosselemann, and followed by Al Gallo. Hi, Bill.
Council.
Please give us your last name, spell it, and give us your address.
Bill Cosselemann, C.O.S.S.E.L.M.O.N. I live at 3375 Fenton Street, about 34 years. Well, this is my 35th year. And I have a daughter that lives in Wilmington, North Carolina, and they have five, six beaches, one of them being Carolina Beach. And of course, the Carolina Beach people, they didn't go and just stripe the streets as we did here. They went ahead and put the islands in and did the sidewalk widening and all this with far, far many more businesses along the street than what we have now. And it lasted one season. Their tourist season probably is from, oh, probably June to through September, and it is a heavier concentration of traffic at that time. But they had to tear it out. And I forget how many million it cost them to do it, and it cost them more to tear it out. So, I would think it would be a pretty good idea to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Al Gallo, followed by Britta Fisher, and then Karen Thaler and Kathleen Marshall.
Albert Gallo, G.A.L.L.O., and I'm at 6685 West 30th Avenue, basically just Pierce and 38th or nearby. I recently moved to Wheat Ridge from North Denver off of Tennyson Street, and if you want to see traffic problems, go down to Tennyson Street, but that's a whole other story. What I would ask, though, and I don't understand why, I'm learning the history of Wheat Ridge since I've only lived here six months now, but this has been a contentious issue for years coming on years. I would support it being on a ballot, but I would ask, what is your out, I mean, what do you want to get out of it being on the ballot? Is it to put it to bed, or is it to just create more issues going down the road? I think you need to look at the long picture rather than just the right-now picture. I don't think even if it was put to a vote, it would solve anything. You've all been elected to office to represent the people of Wheat Ridge, myself included as well as everybody sitting here. So, represent us, and we're asking you to represent us in keeping 38th the way it is right now. I personally enjoy the road diet. When I go for walks, would I rather walk on 38th or would I rather walk on 44th? I think the answer is pretty clear. Also, if you're pulling a, pushing a baby stroller or a wheelchair, or if you have any kind of disability, which street are you really going to want to walk on? If you convert 38th back to four lanes, or if it does get voted in to convert, you're going to lose that whole piece of the pie. So, I would implore our council to please represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Britta, and then we have Karen Thaler.
Good evening. My name is Britta Fisher. I'm the Executive Director of Local Works, and I already spelled my name and all that stuff, so. Local Works connects neighbors and businesses for a vibrant, engaged community. We make investments and plan events to support our community's economic success and vitality. Our board resolved and continues to support the adopted 38th Avenue corridor plan adopted in 2011. One of the important aspects of the plan was acknowledgement and inclusion of the importance of what happens beyond the curbs. This ballot question only addresses the asphalt within the curbs and neglects the important work of our businesses, residents, and community stakeholders in interacting with that expanse of asphalt. The street is performing as is with the three-lane improvements. Sales tax is up, and it is up over the average for the entire city. The vacancy rate is down, under 2%. Vehicle speeds are down, but vehicle counts remain consistent. Businesses have been attracted to and have invested in their existing locations on 38th Avenue. Going back a little farther, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy put forward a big goal: to change the way the city and the residents manage change. I would ask you, as city council, to make a decision that is in your purview and not give us another confusing question that can only answer for a point in time, not for all time, on an issue. How are we managing change? Our board also supported ballot question 2E, now the investing for the future projects. I implore you all to stay on track and keep the trust and respect of the voters to follow through on those projects not yet out of the ground. It was exciting to see the bonds being signed tonight, but there's still a lot of work to be done. Let's keep our priorities and our eyes focused on those priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Britta. I don't see Karen Thaler. Kathleen Marshall?
My name is Kathleen Martell, M.A.R.T.E.L.L. I live at 6455 West 31st in District One. And first, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to have comment tonight on this issue. And I want to say that I'm disappointed we're talking about it again, but I do appreciate that we are being allowed to talk about it. I think that with the passage of 2E, the community has felt so much more united than it did before that election, and that has given me a lot of hope and a lot of good vibes for our community and for our future. And also with our Main Street as it is now and 38th as it is now, I find that to be such a great place for our community to come together. As so many people have mentioned, walking, riding, running into people. I can go almost any establishment on 38th and just run into my community and run into my friends. And I am disappointed that we're talking about changing that. In addition to the spirit of our Main Street right now with so many projects resulting from 2E and other projects that are happening, there's so much potential and there's so much changing that to go to a vote now and try and lock in a decision that, as so many people have pointed out, it doesn't talk to beyond the curb, it doesn't talk to amenities, it doesn't talk to four lanes. Great, but what does that mean to our Main Street? It just seems like the wrong time, the wrong ballot initiative, when there's so much to be positive about and so much to look forward to. And in light of all of that, I ask you all to please stop this where it is now, let 38th sit for a little while, let some of these great things develop, and then let's see where we are and see how this rolls out in favor of our Main Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last speaker that I have signed up. I don't know if there's anybody else that would... I don't know if there's anybody else that would like to speak. We want to keep this as open as possible. Doesn't look like it. I believe at this point it would be time for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to log into my computer here. I move to approve Council Ball 08-2017, ordinance referring about question to the regular municipal election on November 7, 2017, concerning the restriping and repaving design configuration of 38th Avenue between Sheridan Boulevard and Wadsworth Boulevard on first reading. Order published. Public hearing set from Monday, May 8, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers and take effect 15 days after final publication.
I need a second. Seconded by Ms. Durant?
Yes.
If there's no, is there discussion? Ms. Hoppy?
Yeah. Yeah, I just would like to say that moving this straight to a first reading really impacted the opportunity for the citizens to have ample notice and time to be able to speak on record about this issue. And so I'm going to be voting for it to go to second reading so that we can give them more opportunity. That's the reason why I also voted yes for everybody to speak tonight, because I feel like it was unfair for us to steal the study session from them.
Anyone else here to speak? Oh, Ms. Davis.
So I want to thank all the folks for coming tonight and thank council for allowing everyone to speak tonight. I was actually out of town when this came up, and I guess as a council, I was surprised a bit about the ballot question because I know even in our retreats, we talked about trying to work together. We even talked about 38th Avenue briefly, that we recognize that, you know, it still needs to be an item to look at, but I didn't quite think that it was going to be a ballot question. I do mirror a lot of the comments of what folks said tonight. I think that there's a lot going on in our city, a lot going on that may impact the street with us having a new, on Uppam, 38th and Uppam, a new complex, a new apartment complex, which we're welcoming in, and it's going to be nice because it's going to be a nice rental complex there, as well as the work that's going to be done with the new Lucky's Market on 38th and Wadsworth. And they do talk about some of those anchors pulling in businesses into the small businesses which could flow into 38th. Now that being said, I think it is important because I don't think any of us can forecast or we have a magic ball of what that's going to look like. Is it going to make traffic so overwhelming and so crazy that we do need the four lanes at this point? You know, I don't think any one of us have that to forecast, that ability. And I think that the other thing with that is I also agree that we had a lot of processes a year ago on this, and even those folks who wanted the four lanes, they all said, hey, we're not against revitalization, we're not against continuous sidewalks, those are things that we would like. Even, again, I think it goes back to, it's not about the lanes, it's about the amenities and creating a safe Main Street, creating a safe area for our residents to walk, especially now that we have a new elementary school on that street. So I do think that that area needs to be looked at. I don't think it's time for a ballot question now because of, there's a lot of variables out there. And I think this ballot question, and I'm surprised because at one point last year, we were looking at ballot questions that were talking in the millions because we were looking at creating some continuous sidewalks and some walkability. So to me, we're going backwards. I mean, we are simply going back to 1994 where that article is and creating, putting a street back to where it was years and years ago. And I think even the folks that want the four lanes don't want to go back there. And even then, I mean, even during the process, folks had said that. It's not that we don't want the amenity zones, it's not that we don't want a Main Street. It's, you know, it's not even going, respecting the four-lane folks and what they've even said they wanted as far as the continuous sidewalks, the safety, and those types of things. I will not be voting for this tonight. And again, it's not to say, you know, there's emails out there that it's like, oh, you're afraid to put it on. No, it's not that I'm afraid, it's that this is not the ballot question that even, that our residents want. It's selling them short. And so I will be voting no for this tonight.
Well, I think I had Ms. Wood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone who came out and spoke tonight. I also received 30 emails. 29 spoke against putting this on the ballot. Three of those speakers were here, but I would like to put these into the record for tonight, so I have 29 emails. There was one that was pro putting it on the ballot, so there's 30 total emails right I am going to be voting against this, and one of my main reasons was that the process that this came about, when a ballot issue is going to come before the public, I think all council members up here would hope it came with input from all of us. And this was put forward when three members of council were absent, and it was written by one member. So any ballot measure that should come forward should be discussed at a study session, considered with public input, and then created by eight people, not by one. And so the process right there, I was against that. The most recent input from our community on Create 38th was, again, in favor of a three-lane design. And in fact, the two-lane design that was voted on by the people that participated got 44%, and of the eight design concepts featuring four lanes, they only received 23%. So maybe a ballot question needs to be written about two lanes and all the amenities that our citizens want with that. And an earlier speaker spoke to four lanes and then questioned why we hadn't done trees and amenities. We haven't done trees and amenities because we don't have a solid plan that everybody's agreed upon. And so I would have to agree with Kristi Davis that, yes, a ballot question needs to come forward, yes, funding needs to be decided, but it has to be a plan that eight council members have put forth input on and that our citizens have put input on and what they are looking for. And they've said repeatedly, we want slower traffic, we want to be able to walk, we want to be able to bike, and we want a place where we can call Wheat Ridge downtown, where we can call Main Street Wheat Ridge. So to create all of that, we need another study session of input from all of the council. And so I'll be voting against this.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Phil.
I had.
Okay. I can go. Thank you. Just to give you a little bit of background as to, first of all, the question itself that's being considered for the ballot reads as such, "Shall the city of Wheat Ridge revitalize the 30th Avenue corridor between Sheridan Boulevard and Wadsworth Boulevard by restriping and repaving that avenue with at least a four-travelane design?" Sorry, my computer just timed out. "...with a four-travelane design configuration with a total project cost at not to exceed $750,000 to be allocated from the city's capital improvement budget for 2018." And I wrote that question, yes, that was one council member who wrote that question. We all didn't write it, that is true. The reason that I wrote it was because last year, we asked for 38th Avenue to go to the ballot, and then we pulled it off. And so I decided that it needed to be done, that 38th Avenue needs to be voted on by the people. And knowing that 38th Avenue is already slated and considered to be repaved and restriped in the 2018 capital improvement budget for next year, I thought it would make sense to ask this question prior to taking that action in order to make sure that the design that is laid out on 38th Avenue is something that is what all, is what the people desire through that voting process. And so that's why I considered that this ballot question should be put forward, is we are already repaving and restriping 38th Avenue, or at least that's the current plan, that can always change. And that cost to repave and restripe is $750,000 or thereabouts. And so the, knowing that that was already going to take place, asking the simple question of, do the citizens want three lanes or four lanes, I think is a fair question and a question that the majority of our residents want to have the opportunity to answer on their own, simply because we do have several different mechanisms of input that we've already received. I would agree that the Create Your 38th process devised certain outcomes from that process, and that process did distill down to a three-lane design. However, in addition to that, we had a ballot question on the 2014 ballot, which did indicate a vision for 38th Avenue, and that vision was defeated by more than 15 percentage points at the ballot. So there are, I would agree, conflicting and non-congruent points of input that we've received. The purpose of asking this question as opposed to asking a question regarding three lanes is we already have a three-lane design. So if we ask the residents, do you want a four-lane design? And they say, no, we don't want a four-lane design, which, based on the public input we've received today, everybody's going to say, no, we don't want a four-lane design, and it's going to fail tremendously. And that's, that I think is okay. If it goes to the ballot and it succeeds, then we have had an opportunity to actually listen to what the people have to say. And that's what I think is missing here, is we've asked this several different ways and several different manners and forms. We've put it to the ballot regarding the vision for the 38th Avenue corridor, and that failed by more than 15 points. So let's try something different. The idea that we should wait and see what further development and further traffic will do to our current existing configuration as to how to proceed on this just doesn't really compute with me because more traffic will impact this even greater than it already is. And as it relates to the Create Your 38th process, if that is the will of the people, this vote will bear that out. This vote will, if we ask the citizens this question, do you want a four-lane design? And from what everybody's saying, if that is true here tonight, then this ballot question will fail, and guess what? You will get a three-lane design out of that ballot question by way of asking people, do you want a four-lane design? And they say, no. That gets you to where you want to be as it relates to your three-lane design. So for those that think that this three-lane design is the greatest thing since sliced bread, vote on this and let it be known to everybody as opposed to being afraid of this question and not wanting anybody to answer this question because you're afraid you're going to have the same outcome you had in 2014. That's what I think we should do, is put this forward, and it's not going to cost anything more than what we're already expecting and anticipating spending on 38th Avenue regarding the repaving and the striping. So that's why I brought it forward, and that's why I think we should vote yes on this, because it gives the people the opportunity to vote on this. And I'd be open to any other suggestions as to how to change this, but it, to me, it feels like the DAX stacked against me here. But it feels like that if I had gone through the study session and gone through the regular route and not bring this to first reading, it wouldn't have gotten the ability to hear from everybody in the way that we did. So that, to me, is why I brought it forward in the way that I did. The fact that certain council members weren't here is not my problem. I don't set your schedule and you don't set mine. So that's not, I can't dictate what I'm going to do based on who's here and who's not. I have to move forward with what I think is appropriate. And the fact that we were done with the sales tax question told me we go back to what we were dealing with right before the sales tax question, which was a ballot question for 38th Avenue. And that's what I was doing in putting this forward, was taking us back to the task at hand, which is to consider what to do for 38th Avenue once and for all. So that's why I proposed it, and I would encourage you to vote yes on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'll be voting no on this for a host of reasons. But one that we haven't looked at before is the fact that we're a small city, we have a small staff, and we've been talking about this for 20 years. But in the last four years, we've, this has been an all-consuming issue. We've had consultants, we've had plans, we have had meetings, including the Create Your 38th process in which several thousand people participated, if you talk about the actual meetings and the online participation. But the thing you don't see is that during all this period, our staff is busy making these plans and planning these meetings and being involved with the consultants and so on. And what happens is all the other things get put back, they get put behind. We have a lot of problems, we have a lot of opportunities, we have a lot of things to do, and we can't waste our time on this issue when we've spent 20 years talking about this already and intensely talked about this in the last three years. So it's, to me, it's, it will prevent us from moving forward. I think if there's one thing that most Wheat Ridge citizens could agree on, is that we want to move forward. We want to, we want to solve some of the problems we have. And we can't move forward if we are consumed with this divisive wedge issue. I realize there's an election coming and some people like wedge issues, but we really can't afford to waste time on this. We have to solve some of our problems and work ahead with the issues that we have. We have the four projects plus Wadsworth that is just absolutely consuming staff time right now, and we can't, we can't make those in the second tier. So although it appears simple that we just put this on the ballot, between now and then, there would be tremendous uproar and division. So one lady talked about how, since we put this behind us some time ago, we've made tremendous progress in working on some of the issues that the city has, and we've cooperated with one another to get things done. And I think we have to continue doing that, and this is, this would just get in the way. So I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Durant?
Thank you. For all the reasons that were stated from all our citizens out here, which I appreciated in all the emails I received and the comments up here, is why I feel it should go on the ballot. Six years ago, a three-lane pilot study was implemented on 38th Avenue. In 2014, 2B was placed on the ballot, and it failed. I remind you, six years ago. My concern is we are adding two major housing units on 38th Avenue and Uppam, and another on 38th and Wadsworth. Wadsworth will be widened to six lanes with two turn lanes going on to 38th. With added stoplights and increased traffic, the congestion on 38th will be even greater. How will this be safer for our children, pedestrians, bicycles, cars, and buses? Our VADA has 72nd as a corridor for its local traffic. Lakewood has Colfax, Alameda, and Jewel. And Wheat Ridge should have 38th Avenue. An average of 1% of the city bikes to work. 90% of the remaining residents drive or use public transportation or riding cars to get to work or school. Therefore, 90% of 30,000 residents should have consideration and a voice and a vote. Let's give both sides an equal opportunity to state their case for or against without anger, hate, or pointing fingers. I will honor any outcome. Then, as council and community, we can focus on the other issues that are affecting our city, our neighborhoods, from crime, infrastructure, sustainability, education, homelessness. If supporting our citizens' vote on how their tax dollars are spent on 38th Avenue is political wrangling or counterproductive, as some have said, then so be it. But I will always support the will and the vote of the people regardless of the outcome of that vote. I'm not afraid of the people's will. Instead, I embrace it, and I will be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was on spring break with my family and got a text. Did I, did I know what was happening? And obviously, I was extremely disappointed for many reasons, but extremely disappointed that, you know, that we were coming back to this, to this point. We were doing it in a, in a, in a way that felt, felt bad, at least to me. And so here we are. I'm going to start by first thanking everyone, thanking the speakers tonight and thanking the emailers, and I want to make a point about that. Many people did email me. Unless there's a question in that, in that email, I'm, I'm... Unless there's a question in that, in that email, I'm oftentimes taking that input, and, and filing it, and putting it away. I read them carefully. If I didn't engage you, it wasn't to be, to ignore, to ignore your comments, but it was, you know, I'm taking all of, all of that in, as we, as I have, and as I think many of us do, through all of these issues. And again, to everyone who came tonight, and, and to spend their Monday evening, and to go up to the podium and speak, I just want to thank you, and acknowledge that, that, that takes commitment, and, and, and your passion, and your concern for what's going on, and I hope that you'll continue to do that. About eight years ago, it could have been longer, I mean, apparently by the math here, I'm just a newcomer to this issue. But on the Planning Commission, I recall, and I'm going to restate how I've looked at this issue, almost from the start. And that is, that the things that I care about, and the things that I think are important about this topic, are happening behind the curbs, not between the curbs. And I said that eight years ago. John, our engineer, who came up and talked a little bit, reminded us of the math of that issue. And that's why, in fact, we've struggled with this. And I'm not, I don't think, you know, mad about the struggle, I think it's good to struggle about this, but I, but I, I do appreciate the frustration, and I have shared that frustration as, as we've done it, especially when we take our eye off the ball, and that really is, what's happening behind the curbs here? What's the space that we're trying to create? What's, what's, and what is the intention of that? Again, it was stated that either in the NRS, and many other guiding documents, and many other public input forums, have stated that the issues behind the curb are the outcome and the intent of this entire topic. Yet, we're continuing to talk about what's happening between the curb, and getting, and getting, I think, confused, and sometimes not focused, on what's, on what's going on. There's a lot of issues that we can argue about, and I appreciated some of the, some of the things that were said in those emails. And there was one that, that I, that I think the Treasurer was engaged in, as he asked for some, some data from our city manager, to try to understand it. And I think you can set aside a number of things that we could argue about, you know, whether or not the economic, you know, the, the tax increases on 38th are due to the, to the road diet or not. And, and there's a whole bunch of other things. And let's set all of those aside for a second, or at least I will, right now, and say that, the couple of things that I believe are very clear to me, in all of the data, I know some of you have seen it, but we've been talking about this and getting reports for a long time. And that is, is that the street enjoys slower speeds, vehicular traffic today. That's undisputed, this is tested, this is, this is absolutely a fact. It's more accessible because of that point, and it's more active, and more activated because of that, and because of much of the work that's been going on, whether it's local works, or our other engaged citizens who are coming down to the street and using it in a way that we imagined, maybe 23 years ago, maybe eight years ago, maybe six years ago. That's absolutely true. One of the things that I think I agree with the most, out of, out of what has been stated tonight, is that we have real issues, and these issues take real time, and these issues take real money. And we should be spending our time and our money, your money, on those things in an appropriate way. We also have positive momentum and consensus. And I, and many of you, in emails, or tonight, and I've, and even outside of this topic, have brought up the, the consensus, and, and Kathleen even used the word "hope" tonight. And I hope everyone heard that, because that is a, you know, that we need that. Hope about us as a city, getting together and doing good things. And 2E is an absolute example of that. So would we waste any of that? Would we waste all of that, to go back and, and discuss this? I won't. I will not waste that, because that momentum, in people getting active in the community, and the actual work that's going on, the economic development, the built environment changing, people investing in our, in our city, cannot be wasted at all. I'm going to vote no tonight, if you didn't guess, just to make sure you know that. And I'm going to tell you for, for, for three reasons. This is not the right context to put this question into, into place. And I won't belabor that point, because many of you have made it tonight. This is not the right question, the form of the question, what the, what the question will provide us. I disagree respectfully. It's not the right question. And it's not the right time. I have sat up here at this mic and stated that I support it going on the ballot, and I'm not rescinding that. I do. I will, when it's the right context, the right question, and the right time. And tonight, none of those things exist. So, I'll end, as I, as I started, by just thanking everyone, encouraging everyone to continue to support the incredible things that are coming through the work that we're doing, the work that you're doing on 2E, getting engaged in our community, coming out and supporting these, these things that are going on, continuing to talk to your neighbors and other, and other folks on this. And, and by all means, my no vote tonight does not mean that we should stop talking about it, and nor should you.
Mr. Giattulio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment, since it's been referred to in an email that I had sent out to council and some citizens. I'll be quick. What I wanted to let the citizens know, and this report is going to be on the website, city's website, probably this week, but what we did is, based on some comments that some business owners and some folks have said, that the three-lane design has caused hardship on businesses on 38th Avenue since it went into effect. We did some analysis on the, the street from Sheridan to Wadsworth, and starting in 2010 through 2016, the data shows that in every section of 38th Avenue, that sales tax revenue has increased, even in the areas where there's more residential than commercial. From 2010 to 2016, that numbers have increased. So, to say, I mean, we can look at all different reasons why it has increased, but what I can say specifically is that the three lanes has not hurt those areas, that in fact, sales tax has increased quite a bit. And in fact, the biggest area that's increased was both sides of 38th Avenue, from Sheridan to Benton, and then also, both sides of 38th Avenue from Newland to Upham. Those have almost doubled in revenue from 2010 to 2016. I know there's a lot of reasons why that could have happened, but what we can say is it didn't go down, it went up. And the other fact is that the three-lane design has slowed down traffic quite a bit on 38th Avenue, especially between Pierce and Wadsworth, where I live, because it was at one time, two lanes driving, north, or east and west, and then the center turn lane. That speed has decreased down to actually where it's supposed to be. And I drive that street every day, so. That's the data that's been referred to by Mr. Pond, and by Sundari, and a few other folks, and I'll have this out on the city's website this week.
Thank you. Mr. Madam Mayor, can we call the question? I think it is. Council, are you, are you moving to close?
Yes.
Can I get a vote on calling the question?
I had a, Madam Mayor, I had a, I don't know if it's appropriate, edit, question about the emails.
Go ahead.
Comment. Is that okay with you? Councilmember Pond had sent me 20 emails, that I'm guessing might be somewhere in here, and I made one document that had all of them in there, so there wouldn't be 20 attachments. Oh, plus, Ms. Calamine knows, letter two. So there would be 21. And if it's all right with you folks, I will thumb through these, and pick out the ones that aren't already included, add them to that list, and that will be part of the public record, and it will be included in the Laserfish file, if that's all right with you guys.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
Yeah, just a clarification, there was a couple more that came in before tonight's, tonight's meeting, and I would assume that those are, that they meet the intent of it, so I'll probably pass those on to you as well.
That would be fine.
Okay, we have a motion before us. I have a motion in a second to call the question. The council needs to vote on that. Are you ready to call the question? Yes or no?
Call the question.
Call the question, meaning we're going to vote.
Is this second? Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, let's go ahead and cast your votes. This will be on the question that is before us now, the council bill. Do we need to repeat it? Is everybody comfortable?
No.
We're good?
Same as before, right?
Yeah, well, it's just been a long time.
I thought I cleared it.
The motion was seconded, and this is...
This is the motion to pass first reading. Okay. The motion fails three to four, with councilmembers Wooden, Fitzgerald, Davis, and Pond voting no.
Okay. Kind of move forward. I believe that's the end of our business meeting for the night. Thank you very, very much. All of you were a very good audience, I didn't have to scold you or anything. And I appreciate that, we all did. You were professional, and you treated us like professionals.
Thank you.
Let's get through the, the rest of the meeting, if you're comfortable. Let's go on and finish the meeting tonight, which starts with, I've got to go back to my page here. City managers' matters?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight, thanks. You've, Councilmember Pond has the more complicated motion for getting the executive session done, kind of after the study session, but while the business meeting's still ongoing, and you can hear that from him.
We'll go through this. City Treasurer?
Yes, I'd like to remind everybody that we're having our community meeting with city council and the mayor and myself on May 4th, 6:30 to 8, at the Rec Center. The only change in the agenda is that Tyler Downs contacted me today from Wazi Partners, and their Planning Commission meeting is the same night as the, as our town meeting, so he won't be there, obviously. He'll try to get there if, by some chance, the Planning Commission ends early. But I'm inviting everybody to come. Joyce Jay is going to emcee it, and talk about her community's sustainability. Council's going to have the ability to talk about issues as well. We have some community groups coming in to talk, local works. City Manager will be talking about the 2E project, so it's going to be a fun, informative night for everybody. Like I said, the mayor's asked to, and she should emcee and host the meeting. I'll just be there as one speaker. I think it's going to be a fun night to get the information out to our citizens and residents, and thanks to everybody who's going to be there. And 6:30 to 8, May 4th, at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, for those of you that don't know historically, there's, there was reference to 1994, and controversy about 38th Avenue. And the controversy about 38th Avenue in 1994 had to do with Cody de Kipling. Didn't have anything to do with Wadsworth to Sheridan. So I think you should all know that.
Okay, anything else that you'd like to report as city clerk?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
That's a historic fact that a clerk could offer.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have the elected officials' matters, starting out with District 1.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
No, thank you.
Just want to say, congratulations to the Wheat Ridge STEM program, and all their efforts this past year, and was able to attend their gala, and had a great time getting to know the students, as well as the efforts made by our teachers at Wheat Ridge High School, and just want to acknowledge their great efforts, and everything that they've done this year's been amazing, so wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I'm just going to go right down. Ms. Davis?
Nothing, thank you.
She did the sign, okay, great. I'm not going to add anything, because we still have to go down to a study session, and we need to have a motion.
Thank you. I move to recess the regular meeting until after the study session, and following that session, reconvene and go into executive session, for a conference with the city attorney, city manager, and appropriate staff, under Charter Section 5.7b1, and the CRS 24-6-4024b, to receive legal advice concerning litigation. I further move to adjourn the council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Which means, in plain language, that we can go to study session?
Second.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much for that. Second, do we need a vote on this, please?
Second.
Second by me, Zach.
Second by Mr. Urban?
Oh, I hope I cleared it.
I thought when you said it, it was...
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Now we're in study session, and we have a report from RTD?
I need to change the tape.
You need a little tiny break, very quick, please.
Thirty seconds.
Run. No, five minutes out, out, go.
Mayor, you ready? I think we're all here. Mayor, you ready?
Okay, we are, let me see, I need names here. We're having, I know. Let's start study session. How's that? I don't have to hit a hammer or anything.
Sure, you would like me to introduce it?
Please, introduce our guest.
We have RTD here tonight to give us a quick update. Natalie Manton is our director for, let me see if I remember, M or G? You're M?
M.
M, okay, there you go. M for M, Manton for M. So, she's going to introduce it, and then we have some RTD staff here, which I think moral support, or they're going to present, too, so we'll see.
Good evening, city council. Again, Natalie Manton, RTD Board Director for District M, covers Lakewood, Golden, Wheat Ridge. We're going to do a quick update tonight on where we are at with proceeding along with getting the A-line resolved, which is the University of Colorado A-line, going from Denver Union Station out to Denver International Airport. With the issues that we've had on the A-line, that has created some hiccups that we've been working through. On the Gold Line, the G-line, which goes from Denver Union Station out through Arvada, and then ultimately out here in Wheat Ridge, which is the reason that we are here. So, we are moving forward. We have, at this time, filed three waivers with the Federal Railroad Administration, which you'll hear us refer to as FRA over and over and over. What's also tied into this, too, at some level, is the Public Utilities Commission, the PUC, so another acronym that we'll get out of the way. The three waivers that we have filed, and I'm going to let the gentleman here go into a little more detail on these, is that one, we have filed a waiver for the B-line, which I didn't mention yet, but that goes from Denver Union Station up to Westminster. On that line, which this area's not that interested in or as much, is to remove the flagger needed at one of the one crossing that is there presently. The second waiver has to do with the A-line going from Denver Union Station again to the airport, and that is to continue on a waiver status. The deadline, I believe, is coming up is April 30th, so we are asking for an extension on there, and also alerting the FRA that we've made improvements along the line with the problems that we've had, which mainly deal with software. I've been here before to discuss the problem. Essentially, it boils down to gates coming down too soon, safety gates, coming down too soon, staying down too long. So, now back to the waivers. The third is the one that you're most interested in, and that would be the Gold Line. What we have filed, there is a request, forgive me, correct me if I get this wrong, gentlemen, to continue with the testing, because we were stopped at a certain point last year. We had been moving along, we had to stop when the A-line got to a certain level, or certain stage, I guess would be the word, and we had to stop with the testing. The concern is, we all know, when we were waiting for the A-line to get resolved, but knowing with the G-line, we still had to proceed with moving along. So, this waiver will request, if we get that through, will allow us to continue with the testing we need to move on the Gold Line, which then ultimately leads to it opening. So, did I think I covered everything there? Do you have any questions? I'm sure you do.
Yeah, Mr. Evans?
How long will that testing occur?
Okay, now I'm going to bring the gentleman up.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask, too, is that, is the testing on the A-line as well as the G-line occurring at the same time?
The answer is yes.
Okay. Henry?
This is Henry Stappelcamp with RTD. I'm the Assistant General Manager of Capital Programs, so I've got responsibility to the Fast Track programs, plus variety of other things. And then, moral support down here, we've got Dave Genova, who's the CEO of RTD. So, real quick, on the testing for the G-line, how long will it take? Our contractor is looking for about 57 to 60 days of perfect testing. As we all know, that's not probably likely to have perfect testing, so we're looking anywhere between two and three months from the time we get the go-ahead from the FRA. We are out on the University of Colorado A-line implementing the fixes. So, last time we were here presenting to the council, we talked about the methodology, what were the issues associated with it, and how we're moving forward with it. So, we've implemented most of the procedures and software. We vetted it through the FRA, they've approved it, and we used to have a bandwidth of yay big, a foot long, okay. So, we had a wide bandwidth, we've brought it down to most of the crossings, we're within about 10 to 15-second window. So, before that, we were in, sometimes we had minutes. So, we've brought that down, so it's a consistent time for the crossings, so the traveling public basically sees the same thing day in, day out. So, that was our goal. So, we believe we are where we need to be, and we are presenting that to the FRA, asking them for concurrence. And as Director Manton pointed out, it is a two-step process. One is with the Federal Railroad Administration, and one with the Colorado Public Utilities Commission.
Wonderful. Mr., you.
You are B A N.
You are B A N. Mr. You are B A N.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I think that there's somewhat of a confusion within the community with the difference between commuter rail and light rail, in that this G-line is running on what's considered a commuter rail, and it's a heavier car that is required by our partners that are also using that line as well, the different industrial partners or the rail groups that are using that as well. So, first of all, just if you could explain to folks the difference between the light rail and the commuter rail, and then also, as it relates to the comparison between the A-line and the G-line, what assurances do we have that the same issues that we're experiencing on the A-line won't be replicated on the G-line, and are there other issues that aren't present on the A-line that will show up on the G-line because we haven't tested it yet?
Okay, I'll go with the commuter rail versus light rail, and hopefully I'll catch the other ones at the end. So, we are a commuter rail operation on the A, the G, and the B-line. This is FRA-compliant equipment. So, you're right, it is a heavier piece of equipment. It's kind of like an Amtrak train. It's, the terminology lighter versus heavy, we try to stay away from it. It's commuter rail operation governed by the FRA. Our light rail operations, they are smaller cars, but the track gauge is the same. The vehicles are about, oh, two-thirds lighter than the heavier. The big difference is the articulation. Our light rail vehicles bend in center, which allows going around tighter curves, downtown running. They accelerate a whole lot faster, and they stop faster. The commuter rail operations are basically a big hunk of steel, and they don't pivot in the center. They act like a typical rail vehicle, so we are sharing the corridor with Berlins North and Santa Fe Railway, NSF now, through this corridor. And originally, we were looking at a light rail configuration, but how we tie in a Denver Union Station and how the other lines tie in, the freight railroads have encouraged us to go with a heavier piece of equipment in case there is a connection between our equipment and their equipment. And we're doing everything we can to prevent that. So, then it gets back into question number two, as far as should we see the same stuff on the G-line as we did on the University of Colorado A-line? We are hoping that we don't. The whole process is trying to figure out what works and what doesn't work. So, we have changed the software, we've put in delays, we are putting hardware in the track circuits, so we're doing all that on the University of Colorado A-line. Our goal is to transfer that over here, so it's in place when we start testing. One of the things we really, really want to do is do the quiet zones. We cannot do quiet zones until we can demonstrate we can do constant warning, and it has to be very consistent, and that's one of the downfalls right now on the University of Colorado A-line. We believe when we start the testing on the G-line, that we'll have everything implemented for the constant, consistent warning, and that when we start, revenue service will be in quiet zones.
Thank you.
Someone else? Mr. Pond?
I think my questions have been answered. I just actually want to just thank you guys for, yeah, for hanging in there tonight, for sure. Thank you so much for doing that, for showing up, and for being responsive all through this process. It means a lot to us, to me personally, so thank you.
You're welcome. Patrick has our information, so if you do need to get us for any questions or anything else, just let us know.
Really do appreciate your being here. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I heard the qualifier "many" in there. Are there more problems you're not talking about that you said we've solved many of the problems?
All right, more than we're not talking about. I believe we've solved many problems that we came across, and we should not be seeing those issues on the G-line. Are we hiding anything from you guys? Not to my knowledge. I believe everything is up above board, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. There have been, when I say many, we're talking different components, so yes, everybody sees it as an at-grade crossing issue. This gets into our wireless technology, but there are different components, so we're seeing some track circuits we're fixing, we're some timers we're fixing, so there's many little things that put this whole thing together. So, that's where I'm going, the many. We believe we've taken care of all the issues associated with it.
And is there, is there time required for you to transfer the technology that you are now installing on the A-line to the G-line before you start testing?
Most of that's software, and so the software has been updated, ready to be installed, and the hardware, they've already ordered the materials, so as soon as we get the go-ahead, we'll be installing the material out there as well.
Madam Mayor?
I do have one additional question, as it relates to the opening of the G-line, based on some of the new information you've received from the FRA, do you have any anticipated opening date for the G-line, and would there be anything that would keep the G-line from opening in 2017?
We do not have a date at this time. Once we get permission to go into service, it'll be more realistic to come up with a date on that, but we still have to do the hurdles of the FRA and the PUC, and to speak before we see how the testing goes, I think it's premature. Our goal is definitely to get it done by 2017.
Thank you.
We keep referring to testing. Could you tell us briefly what testing, what that contains?
Okay, so for the testing of any of our systems, whether it's positive train control, the wireless, or crossings, we're testing every component of our system. So, this is going from the design side, through the construction, through the implementation.
Okay.
So, we test things as simple as handrails, ADA curb ramps. We're out there measuring and verifying. We've got over 10,000 items that we've certified already on this corridor. So, the testing we're talking about right now, we're down to the positive train control, where we need to run trains through to verify that the signals are being received and being transmitted. We need to check the variable message boards, make sure that that interface is happening. The big one is the at-grade crossings, make sure the gates come down 20 seconds before the train gets there, make sure it acts appropriately. So, we're really focusing more on the positive train control, the signal system, and the at-grade crossings. The other stuff, we've already gone through, so we've ensured that it does meet ADA. We've got safety issues taken care of, the fencing, the benches are grounded. I mean, those are the things, and the favorite one, driver's relief kiosks have co-hooks in them. So, I mean, all those little things get put into the checklist that we go through.
Okay, pretty thorough.
Yes.
We appreciate that. Any other questions? Mr. Pond, no, Patrick, you're not? All right. I believe we can say goodnight, and thank you so much for being here. Dave, you didn't even, you're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
It's appropriate now to close the study session and reconvene the business meeting as declared by the motion.
Okay, we are closing the study session and reconvening, meaning we're opening up the business meeting so that we can go to executive session.
And I think we can probably do that in the lobby conference room, so we'll see you in there.
I think there was a request for a few-minute break.
I didn't get out of my seat.
Okay, so, and then reconvene in the adjoining conference room.
Yes, that's great, thank you.